Evening, ladies and gentlemen. With the interest of punctuality, I would officially call this meeting to order at 6:32 PM. And would express appreciation to those of you who've chosen to extend your precious life energy and support and withstand the prayers of the City of Vator. Especially, I would like to personally welcome the members of the Vator City Council who are present. And we are awaiting the arrival of one member, but we'll proceed even in his absence. So with that, we'll proceed with the roll call. And would invite our city clerk, Prejmer Nielsen, to form that for us.
Mayor Smith.
Present.
And Andy Wilson.
He informed me earlier today that he would be unable to attend due to an illness.
And, trying to think who's next. Mark Seton.
Present.
Kevin Flynn.
Present.
Joe Schei.
Present.
Right.
Head accounted for.
Justin Olson.
Present.
Not more.
Let's form. Now let's, we will please stand for our place of allegiance. With the presence of Mr. Olson, he will lead us today.
My place of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll dive into our agenda. First up is the mayor's report. I don't want to be discreet here, but I know Mr. Schei had a good reason for being late. We understand that today's his anniversary. His wife is with us here, and they were celebrating earlier today. So we...
It was wonderful. We recovered.
I'd be a standing ovation, but it just takes too much time.
But we thank you. Published in the agenda was one item from the mayor's report, and that's an update on the Ananen Road project. There are a lot of feelings about that issue. I feel it's important enough to keep council members briefed regularly on its status. I would invite members of council, if you have information, it would be helpful to me, the mayor, on this issue with regard to accurate information regarding the property line, which we currently believe to be 13 feet from the eastern corner of the Little Crane Restaurant. If you have information to the contrary, that's represented in any form of document, I would welcome the receipt of saying. Because ultimately, that property line will determine the extent to which City of Vator will get involved with that project. But I can tell you that nothing much has changed from our last council meeting, in which you were informed, the contractor who had assured us that they would provide an estimate for the project to involve, has officially failed to perform his promised or provide the promised report. And so, we take it upon ourselves, as I mentioned in the last council meeting, to contact an engineer with Gibson Olson. And this afternoon, I met with that individual. We personally drove over to the Little Crane Restaurant, and I explained to him the drainage problem, which you're already aware of, on the east side of Ananen Road. And I told him about the crushed rainwater drainage pipe that runs east and west along Highway 506. And then, I pointed out to him the drainage problem that is creating flooding underneath the Little Crane Restaurant. So, he understands the situation and gave assurances to me that though he and his partner will be out next week for unspecified reasons, but he will have a report shortly thereafter, which will include a cost estimate for the work to be performed in that location. So I'm confident that inasmuch as they're a full-time employee with Gibson Olson, that we will get a product for council review. So that's my report on the Ananen Road project. And that's all I have. Well, perhaps I should announce, for not only council's education, but for the knowledge of the members of the public who are here, that I was informed unofficially that the May Day Parade and festivities have been officially canceled for 2014. If somebody has information to the contrary, I welcome that reporting. But as you're well aware, the City of Vator doesn't have any sponsorship involvement with that event, so it doesn't necessarily impact council. But obviously, it's a long-held traditional celebration. Do you see a potential comment?
Just that I was informed that the reason was because there isn't anyone who wants to head up the organization of it, so if there's somebody out there who wants to head up the organization of it, you may, I could make some contact with people.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I was informed that efforts had been made to try to generate some support and interest in it, but it had been unsuccessful. So with that, we have a comment from a member of the public, but the council is here to entertain comments from the public regarding this topic.
Sure.
It's just short. With everything being combined for the fourth, I don't see any reason, you know, why that could not be a celebration that's also, if necessary.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I sense from my feedback from the community is that there is a greater supportive desire for that Fourth of July holiday. So, and the city has, council, don't want to put words in your mouth, but council, in the last two years, has provided insurance coverage for that emerging city celebration. And would presume that we will be providing insurance coverage for this.
I don't think we did last year.
Yeah, you did last year.
Yeah, we did.
We did last year, we did the year before.
Okay.
But yes, the council has added a budget to support three different activities in the city this year, and that was one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes the mayor's report. Other reports, item one, that was the sheriff's report. Forty minutes ago, I received a telephone call from Rob Snaza, who had plans to be here. However, he was called out to respond to a significant criminal activity in an undisclosed location, but it has to do with seizure of considerable amount of marijuana.
You're in Vader.
Not in Vader. If he was in Vader, he'd be here.
He's talking about here, and he brought it in to what?
I can tell you that he shared with me some information that he felt that if I didn't mind, I would share it with the public and the members of the council. He said that they're responding to a number of call-outs generated by citizens within the community relating to vehicular activity, illegal vehicular activity, as well as other criminal activities, and they are appreciative of the information that has been forthcoming from Vator residents. As of yesterday, they had 49 call-outs for 2014, which is consistent with Vator's historical trend, and nothing alarming in those numbers. So he thought that that was good. But then he did provide some insight regarding the Lewis County Sheriff's Department policies relating to the application of the law relating to marijuana activities. And I would choose to wait to share some of his comments when we reach that item on the agenda. So that is the essence of his input for me on the sheriff's report. So with that, unless council has any questions or opinions to the contrary, we'd go with item number two under other reports. We're pleased to have with us Mr. John Rowe, who's candidate for District Three County Commissioner, a position which is being vacated by Mr. Lee Rose, who has served for quite a while in that office and has chosen not to run for reelection. So Mr. Rose asked if he could take a few minutes to share with us his perspectives, and so we've accepted that offer, and would invite you, Mr. Rowe, to take the stand.
Well, I'll tell you, Ken, I'll do it from right here. I'm not much for political speeches, to be honest with you. And what I tend to do is more talk with folks than I do give speeches. It doesn't seem to pan out real well, anyway. The bottom line is that, from my discovery so far, that Lee is well thought of in the position that he's in. For him to step out now, I've got some very big shoes that I'm going to have to fill, say the very least. But I've done this before, 20 years ago, when I lived one block over from where we're at right now. I ran for commissioner back then. And while it was a fairly good showing, from my standards, anyway, Glenn Aldrich, Monster Rock, was able to take the medal in that particular race. Now this time around, what I've tried to get across to the folks that I've been talking to, is that as difficult as it is to believe, this is going to be my last shot at a public office, and I want to do it just based on the idea of being of service back to Lewis County. I'm not looking for the notoriety, and I'm not looking for the monetary reward. I want to try to give back something that I think the county gave to me years ago. And that being the case, then, I'm looking for whatever support I can get out of here. Being a Vader boy originally, turned out fairly decent, obviously. The problems that we had back in the day are still the problems you guys are dealing with today. We don't have much in the way of labor possibilities for our young people around here. I had to leave the area and go up to King County to earn my living. I spent 45 years up there as an air freight and air cargo manager and representative. I ran my own company up there for a few years, and I think that experience alone was enough to let me know that doing things where you require people working with you and for you can be a very difficult thing. For politics, what these folks are doing here right now is a tough, tough road ahead, and I admire them for what they're doing. You don't always get the credit that you'd like to get for the things that you do, but I'll certainly try to step into Lee's shoes and see if I can benefit everybody that's in the Third District. Third District runs all the way through the Wildwood Road out here to Patwood Road. Almost 95 to 100 miles, you have to come around here to do it. And I can't do it by myself, so what I've decided to do is that within each area that I want to campaign in, I'm going to try to find someone who is willing to give the answers if people have questions about my philosophy, about my political ideas and whatnot. I will find somebody who will kind of pick up the baton and run with it from a local area. And fortunately for me, Julie has volunteered to do it for you guys. So, that being the case, then, we'll get with Julie, and we'll give her what information I can. If there's anything that I can do personally, I spend right now an awful lot of time up at county. I'm sitting in on all of the commissioners' meetings every week, on every Monday. If there's questions that the city council might have, that maybe I can dig some answers out of there, or if citizens have got questions, please feel free to contact me, and I'll see what I can do to get the answers for you. But I'm looking forward to the run. It's going to be fun. Deja vu, but nonetheless. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Wonderful. Well, with that, let's proceed with our approval of our minutes from our previous two meetings, a council meeting and a public hearing. We await council action.
I'd like to put a motion forward to approve the minutes for March 13, 2014, and for the public hearing on March 21, 2014.
Okay, approved motion submitted by Mr. Flynn to approve those meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
I'd like to make a second.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's carry. It's now time for our public comment. Do you have any individuals signed up?
Four. Nurse on the list, the tally four. Hally Florida, 11A Vider. There are three plants that I'd like to make you aware of that you're not. One is a mushroom plant in Lacy, another is a potato chip plant that is near Super Mall in Auburn, and then, of course, there's the mint plant in Chehalis. They all process vegetation. They all have odor. The mint plant, most of us consider a happy odor. Despite the efforts that they made at Tim's Kekke Potato Chip Plant, and I worked there for almost four years, there was a problem with odor. Of course, that's why they were not in a residential area. This plant that's going in, if it goes in, and I humbly pray it will not, is west of most of us. The wind blows from the west this way. If you don't care about anything else, you might want to care about that, because a lot of us do not feel that marijuana pot is a happy smell. The people we might want to rant to, or the people we might want to sell our homes to, are going to need a couple of things. They're going to need a good horse history and a strong credit rating. For some reason, don't know why, people who think that marijuana is a happy smell do not necessarily have these two things. Medical marijuana, you know, we've heard wonderful testimony here about what has this done for many people. They're obviously getting their marijuana, they're obviously using it, and they are getting benefits from it. Medical marijuana is not the issue. It's not up to the council to say that they can or cannot have it, they're giving it. Third, and last, why do you believe that the illegal marijuana, the freelance marijuana growers, are going to suddenly disappear when Mr. Milton and his colleagues open up their plants? There's going to be a massive law enforcement problem, because they can sell cheaper than the legal ones can. See Whiskey Rebellion long ago, okay? You're going to have a major law enforcement problem trying to stamp out the people who rent their garages and their greenhouses, and that's pretty bad. And I'll tell you the thing that's closest to my heart, and that's infants, pregnant women, and small children. They have no defense. There is no research on what long-term effects of the chemicals that come from marijuana multiple are going to have on this population, and they have no one to speak for them. I'm of the generation where four out of five doctors recommended Lucky Strike, and smoking tobacco was a great help to all. What are we going to fight over 20 years of marijuana? And why do we have to have it in our tiny town? Don't we have enough problems, folks?
Okay, thank you. All right. Appreciate that.
I just have been asked by the car club for a little update on the price for the model of the park for their car show that they're going to have on June 7. That was talked about last meeting, but I haven't written it back. I know we talked, that last year when they had the car club, they had, they gave you a $50 fee for the park, and they didn't use because it got rained down. So, they're hoping that we can...
Well, during the public comment, I think it's probably not the best time to elicit that. Perhaps if I had the council's authorization, I could work with you on that, and we could arrive at a...
Yeah, let's get it done.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay, with that authority, Steve, let you and I talk with Joe, and we'll arrive at a figure that we can negotiate with. Sounds fair.
What can we do, how, and what can we know of this?
Could I mean, we get any...
Tomorrow? Yeah. Yeah, that works.
Julie Headlon. Julie Headlon, 1108 East Street, Vator, Washington. In retrospect to the comment made by Harry's four, I would like to also add that there is such a thing as secondhand highs, okay? Kind of like secondhand smoke. You blow into somebody's face, and you will get high, okay? That is a fact. That is not fiction. Second, on that same subject, organic is better. Why? No chemicals. Good luck with that. On my, now changing subject, on my, oh, we happen to have, in our midst, a dishonest mechanic in the town of Vator. This mechanic shop, I will not name names at this point in time, stole the battery out of my car, and proceeded to treat my car as a non-running vehicle, to the point that it could not almost be put back together. However, it will be on the road soon. And I think all of Vator needs to know this. It is located in the town of Vator, and that's all that needs to be said about that. And if you need any more information, I will be typing up a letter to the editor, and it will be printed in more than one newspaper. Thank you. I appreciate it, everybody. Ladies and gentlemen, have a great day.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Hager. My name is Elizabeth Hager. I live at 1304 in Chris Road, which is just outside of the city limits. And I'm here today off my sick bed, because I'm just getting over pneumonia. I feel it's important to come before the council and also the people who are here in regards to marijuana. This is a small portion of information I have gleaned from the web, and also from the liquor board, and also from the federal government in regards to marijuana in our Since my background is medical, I'm a retired nurse, I do enjoy the medical aspects of marijuana and what it will do. Yes, there is a positive to marijuana. However, if a person does not have the DNA receptors for benefiting from it, they will not. In fact, it will do quite the opposite. And if you don't believe me, get on the web and do your research. Since a lot of us have called, a lot of us, and I've heard quite a few, this smell is going to affect a lot of months around here. Not only the smell, but also the effect of the second hand, or the wind bringing it in. And Hally is right, wind comes from the west normally into the city. So I won't have a problem with it, because I'm outside of the city limits, but you will, those who live within the city limits. I strongly urge the council to consider not allowing the marijuana plant to come in. I strongly urge the council and those who are in cooperation with this endeavor to go back to the original plan of putting in a bona fide business, which the city at one time was willing to open their arms to do, and that would benefit our community. However, changing that around and making it something that will not benefit our city is not a good idea. The money will not be seen through the city, which has been previously suggested. It will go elsewhere. It will not come to us at all. It will not benefit us whatsoever. And so I strongly urge the council, please, please do not pass this. Do not allow it to come in. Allow yourself, other groups, and other small communities and towns to stand strong, and to make our community what it should be, not what it could be with the money, because you'll not see any of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We thank those who demonstrated the courage and conviction to stand, be heard, and for the several and respectful way in which you responded to the comments. Okay, well then, with that, having been completed, we'll proceed with the approval, official approval of our agenda items, and we await council action.
I'd like to approve the agenda as written for Thursday, March 27.
Okay. Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Penney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's proceed with voucher approval. Again, council action.
I'll make a motion, we approve all of March 2014 vouchers for $21,249.49, with the correction for 2014 vouchers, correction to check numbers that were noted.
We've had the motion to submit the, or to approve, the voucher total, the amount specified, with the administrative correction to the check serial number correction. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All business. We figured it would be wisest to include this agenda item as number one. This will be the council's opportunity to provide their personal feedback to the public hearing, which was held on March 21, relating to ordinance 2014-02, an interim ban on marijuana activity in the city limits of Vator. So, as is often the case, you received at the last minute, earlier this afternoon, the document which was prepared by Carol Morris, our city attorney, which provides the content for ordinance number 2014-03. I suspect that not all of the council would have been able to read that ordinance, and do we know?
Everyone got it ahead of time, except for...
Yeah. I was reading that a little bit ago. So, had we been able to get it earlier, you would have had it earlier, but such is the life in the little city. But this ordinance provides a course of action for the council. Obviously, I won't put words in the mouth of the council, but I would call your attention section three on page three, which is the opportunity for the mayor and council to provide what you could be referred to as the findings of fact that you've heard in previous meetings, which you would like to articulate tonight in response to the comments made by the public in the public hearing on the 21st. And those comments would be inserted contingent upon your action on the ordinance. So, if that makes sense. The mayor is generally invited to remain silent until members of the council have had the opportunity to share your perspectives on it. So with that injunction, I will remain silent, but then perhaps, if I feel so inclined, provide my perspectives after hearing the council members.
Do we want to go left or right?
Well, why don't we start with the left?
I'm wondering if we should make it clear to the public what exactly is happening.
Well, if the council's... I mean, I appreciate the sensitivity, but the council has the ordinance in front of them. It's their priority. And so the suggestion was made to start to the left, and so... And so the suggestion was made to start to the left and so I would honor that, unless you want to argue, certainly right.
That would be a good start.
Well, I look at the, I read it very carefully and I considered the arguments that were presented. However, I, I opposed this from the very beginning, even as a law. And I don't think it's good for medical use, you know? I understand that. And I've got a few things, I'll just read what I've got here. Like all other potential harmful drugs, medical marijuana should be determined by doctor's prescription and distribution by pharmacies, pharmaceutical providers. Hence prohibition of a city permit does not deny anyone that legitimately needs it from kidney to be properly protected means. As far as recreational use, I think we understand that forty out, forty-eight out of fifty states didn't vote for this. And so the overwhelming majority of American citizens continue to regard recreational use as immoral, essentially not a very good idea. Because it sends a convictry message to our children about drugs that promotes unhealthy habits to both adults and children. It's a harmful product. Recent studies conducted by the state of Nevada concluded smoking marijuana cigarettes involves about three to five times more tar into lungs than one filtered cigarette. Smoking three to five joints per day causes much harm to the respiratory system as smoking a full pack of cigarettes a day. And yet we tell our children, smoke instead. We have all this advertising on TV saying, "Don't do this." And yet we turn around to do something that's just as harmful. Adults need to listen to that. I don't think any drug is good for anyone, unless it's a drug prescribed and they need it. And I can't see this as good for our city, or good for our children. It may be good for business, it may be good for money, but I'm not willing to sacrifice our children, the alter money, or our citizens, or our community. And I know after marijuana became legal in Sweden, smoke shops in the Netherlands, consumption nearly tripled among eighteen to twenty-year-olds. This is a study that Nevada did when they were considering it. And so by granting permission to grow in our community, it will produce the same results right here, produce there. The argument that legal and easier access will decrease the illegal distribution is irrational, I might have guessed. The legal drug dealers will still be supported by meth, heroin, ecstasy, et cetera, drugs, and our children will still be their focus. Doesn't escape. And my kids, I know from personal experience, my own children were on marijuana and the dumb down effects it has on my children. You know, our educational system has a problem right now because we're falling far behind other nations in our educational standards. A lot of our kids can't even read and write when they graduate from school. We don't need a dumb down effect on our children. It's not good for our own selves, it kills them. To me, this is immoral and it should be illegal. I think promoting it locally will lead to legislation of harsher drugs being supported by the same reasoning. Some said this will provide a financial boost for our community. This is all about money at the expense of moral integrity and health of our citizens and the children. Money cannot buy back moral integrity and health of our children, you just can't buy it. It's selling our kids downstream, as far as I'm concerned. I haven't, I don't know what the other councilman here thinks, that's what I think. Some may be thinking it's already legal here and so why are you beating a dead duck? Well, my answer is just because the majority of Washington state promotes such a law, that does not mean citizens and communities with common sense and moral integrity should roll over to this kind of nonsense. Because that's what it is, it's nonsense. We need to keep on resisting the inroads of this law until it's reversed and removed from our state. As long as I hold the position of councilman in Vader, Washington, I will not budge one centimeter from doing everything in my power to resist and overturn this ridiculous and moral law. And that's the way I view it. I don't want to offend anybody, but that's my personal position.
Okay, well, I would, personally, you provided some numerous compelling points. We are recording this and our objective will be to extract the talking points that you provided to the other council members and we will insert that in section three. That's correct. So you read that quickly, you were very feeling, but we, rest assured, we will capture what you shared as a talking point. It's called a statement of fact, but, so it's an odd phrase, but that's what it's referred to when council members provide those perspectives. So thank you for that. And Mr. Olson.
Yeah, after our last meeting, just hearing the public and residents of what we had to discuss, taking the subject, the first thing I read, I think it was Monday or Tuesday in the newspaper in Longview, said, title was, "The Smell of Marijuana." And it was, and it caught my eye because I didn't know for sure if they're talking about money and how they're going to spin that. So I read it and sure enough, it was about the odor. And it was just kind of more neutral about the odor, but, but they specified the odor and it was interesting that some of our residents specifically brought that up tonight. But in Denver, Colorado, they're trying to work out that issue right now. It sounds like the owners are trying to figure out how to control the odor. So there was some mentioning of that. So my thoughts on it, after reading that and hearing the public about it, just the risk involved, well, you talk to any advisor about investing, this is way too high of a risk, especially for a small community. We're, we're an overhead dealing with this and we need to have a diversified investment, diversified business operations before you can even venture in a high risk like this. We're not, we don't have that kind of a foundation as a community to take that kind of risk. We don't know about the footprint that marijuana could bring to the, to the environment. We have a fragile ecosystem with our streams, so we've got to be cautious with that. We need specific science and data to back that up. And right now, as of the state, I believe that we've only had one survey testing done on the environment and it's not finished yet. So we don't know the implications in the footprint that, that that kind of business could bring to the community as far as the environment. In the local economy, yeah, we hear about fanatical amounts of dollars and I just don't see it. Maybe a few, maybe a few will make it, but as far as the residents of Vader, I just, I already, I see people coming in from Alabama and Portland and different aspects and I'm not seeing the residents of Vader benefiting from this. So the local economy and the culture, so I see it hurting the environment. We don't know about the environment, the footprint that could have on the, the impact on the environment of the local economy, our culture, the culture of our town, our community. We have, we have, we're really trying to build it up. We want to build up the vitality of this community. And marijuana and drugs just has a negative connotation and then of course the fruition of all that, of all of us, of the students, classmates in school and seeing the ramifications of that and if a potential productive life goes into a very unproductive life. I've seen it firsthand and it happens today, even at business today that I'm involved with. So I conclude with that.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
So I'd like to thank everybody for their public comment last week and for this week and the previous weeks, heard from both sides, it's been great. I'd like the public to listen to your city council and these guys aren't just making a snap judgment on what they want to do, they're being thoughtful and they're putting some time in it. You know, they're thinking about it, they're really putting some time into it, so to notice that as well. So initially, we had this six-month temporary ban and it's not on the, it's not on medical marijuana, it's not on recreational marijuana use within the city limits. It is solely on the zoning of, for industrial uses. It is for the manufacture and the sale of it within the city, the city limits. So that is what we're deliberating on. And my understanding is currently we have a few different options on the table tonight. We can continue with the six months, so it would expire in June. We can overrule the ordinance completely and not have a ban at all. Or we can adopt it as written and have it continue on. My initial thoughts on the temporary six-month ban were the unrest in the state legislature with all the pending marijuana-related legislation and waiting on further guidance from the, from the state and from the legislature. And so I still haven't seen that and I'm still waiting on some of that, so. My main concern is the image that Vader has, you know, we're trying to clean ourselves up, trying to be inviting to new families, you know, it's the, we want people to say, "Hey, Vader is an option for me to move to." Whether, whether marijuana is legal or illegal won't matter to some people. It doesn't matter in their mind, obviously, we've heard from both sides again and again and again. What the, what the issue is, is we, for me, we want people to come to town. If we have this facility here, or if we, not even this facility, any, any type of facility at all, will people consider this an option? And we've seen from the voting records that half of the people, more or less, are against this type of, this type of behavior. So do we want to instantly limit the amount of people that will want to move into our town by half? And I, I don't want to do that. So that is, that is my feeling right now.
Okay, well, Sid. Mr. Flynn?
I might not be as eloquent as the previous council members, but there's a couple of things we have to look at. Marijuana is still considered illegal federally and companies in Colorado are already facing this problem. The banks, because they're federal deposit insurance corporations, are not allowed to take money from illicit means. So the people manufacturing marijuana have to keep the cash in their plants. They have no, they're not allowed to make bank deposits with the money and the money stinks, so they can trace it, they have no problem. That has presented a whole new crime market. Since the crime bosses now know that they have cash sitting in these plants, they're having robberies and attacks going on at all the manufacturing plants of marijuana in the state of Colorado. It has become one of their major problems. So do we need additional problems in this town? No. Everybody said onsite how much money we were going to get from this. The state passed last Friday a legislature saying that there would be no money coming to the small towns. None, zero. So we, there is really no benefit for us other than more crime and more police costs. There was a big article in the paper this week about how the city of Vader is going to have a surplus for the first time in many years and especially a shocker since we had so much trouble a couple of years ago. In that article, it was mentioned that we, part of the reason why we have a surplus is because we're saving money on our police cost. Well, if we get marijuana, the savings on our police cost is going to go out the door. And that's from the sheriff's department, from John Schna, Rob Schnauser, sat down with me and explained to me what would happen. And I didn't need anything else to, for that. On a personal note, there's been a lot of snide remarks made about religion. I've been called a religious bigot, a bigot, which I said thank you to. I have not made any of my decisions based on my religion. My decisions are based on the benefits for this town. And I don't see any benefits for this town whatsoever from marijuana. It's nice to have a business come into town, but it would be nice, much nicer to have three or four small businesses come in and see it producing. One of the big rules of business is don't put all your eggs in one basket and that's one of the rules of investing. And if the city of Vader passes an ordinance that allows POT to take on our thirty acres of industrial land, we have put all of our investment monies into one basket. And when it fails, we fail, so it's not good. I'll keep the rest of my personal feelings to myself, but I, I've been accused of not talking to anybody and that we couldn't defend, they couldn't defend their position because we wouldn't talk to them. Well, we didn't talk to them because we were threatened with a lawsuit. And if you talk to any attorney, they'll tell you. You don't talk to the opposing side unless your attorney's present. Because you could say something that would benefit the other side or get yourself in trouble personally. So that is the reason why the people in this council have not spoken outside of the council meeting because we're not going to face a lawsuit personally or otherwise because of a mistaking, a mistake or something taken out of context. I think that pretty much addresses the situation that I feel. I'm done.
I'm not surprised that I've discovered, as I've listened to the commentary from my distinguished council members, that you've stolen my thunder, if I had any thunder to share with me. I think I've made my perspectives very clear and over the weeks, the previous weeks and the other opportunities where the public has been present in our council meetings and other various public hearings. I would echo entirely the sentiments that have been shared by the council members. So I won't belabor the well-taken points they've shared. I would, the only two points I would elaborate on that I didn't hear, perhaps specifically as maybe ought to be, were comments that I received from the Lewis County Sheriff's Department earlier this afternoon. As I indicated, Rob Schnauser, who is running for Lewis County Sheriff for the opening that will take place in November, is the officer who oversees the Lewis County enforcement efforts in the city of Vader. They're under the current contract to provide law enforcement services to the city of Vader. And he was at a large marijuana-growing bust that they were carrying out even as he was speaking with me an hour or so ago. And he wanted, made it very clear to me that there is a zero tolerance policy in Lewis County Sheriff's Department in Lewis County. Anybody thinks that they're, it's legal to engage in a growing operation without a proper certification and licenses relating to medical marijuana distribution, they're sadly mistaken. And they have seized thousands of dollars just as one operator's department, material, equipment, vehicles, you name it. And that policy will be applied across the board in Lewis County areas until there is federal law change because it is still against federal law. And just because the state of Washington, and as Mr. Shai mentioned, there is so much turmoil with regard to the application of 502 that you subject yourselves to all sorts of potential liability issues, in spite of what people might say to the contrary. And Mr. Schnauser reinforced that they are still uncertain as to the law enforcement costs that will be generated by the implementation of those businesses in our city limits. So I would underscore that point that Mr. Flynn made very well. Lastly, I would expand on the point Mr. Flynn made with regard to the statement, finding of fact that was provided by Mr. Milton in our last public meeting, in which he stated that apparently the policy of City Hall is not to talk to him and that he'd been prevented from talking to new council members. And is this the kind of policy the city wants to have with those who don't agree with, about not talking to, about? I would cite RCW, which is state law 42.36.060, which states that ex parte contacts outside of a public meeting by elected officials who are decision-makers on matters related to this very topic, which is a quasi-judicial matter, which relates to the application of city zoning laws and ordinances in an industrial site. of city zoning laws and ordinances on an industrial site or another specific zoning area within the city that impacts one single landowner. It exposes those elected officials to a quasi-judicial appearance of fairness law. And it specifically states, during the pendency of any quasi judicial, and this is state law, during the pendency of any quasi-judicial proceeding, no member of a decision-making body may engage in an ex parte, which means outside of the public meeting set, communication with opponents or proponents with respect to the proposal which is the subject of the proceeding, unless that person, one, places on the record the substance of any written or oral ex parte communication concerning the issue. And then provides that a public announcement of the content of the communication and of the party's rights to rebut the substance of the communication shall be made at each hearing where action is considered or taken on the subject to which the communication is related. So, contrary to the implications of the comments in that statement of fact, we have been advised by our city attorney that to engage in any other activity is contrary to state law. So, we're not acting in an effort to squelch a conversation. That's what public meetings and public hearings are intended to accomplish. So, we're setting actions on advisement from our city council, from our city attorney. And I agree with that. Not to mention the fact that we, it's been inferred, not suddenly, that there is likely to be illegal action against the city if the action taken by the council takes effect. So, that comment alone is sufficient to discontinue any outside contact with opponents or proponents of the issue, by members of the council or the mayor, all of whom are elected officials. So, that would conclude my more specific commentary on the matter.
Can you give me that RCW number again?
Yeah, it's 42.36.050. And we have a comment from a member of the public, Mr. Milton. The council has his standard operating procedure, has, you can hear comments from the public regarding council meetings. Would you care to hear from Mr. Milton? Mr. Flynn?
I'll listen.
Okay, I'd like to. Got that?
Yeah.
Okay, proceed.
I'd just like to be clear that the conversation I'd like to have with council, public or otherwise, need not be ex parte. It can be the format of your choice. It can be a public meeting. It can be a question-and-answer session. I think that there's just one opportunity that's been afforded me to be able to either update the council on what my plans are. I haven't even been able to say so much as the size of my operation, or what's going to be, you know, there are a lot of details that I think you'd be interested to hear about. You know, if this is, you know, you guys have talked about how thoughtful you've been, and how much time you've invested in this decision. Well, you know, most of you haven't invested 20 seconds to even ask me questions directly about what this operation will look like. So, my complaint is that both the council and the public have been effectively cut off by this policy from information that I'd be in a position to offer. And a lot of that is directed specifically at avoiding a lawsuit. I don't want a lawsuit with anybody. That doesn't, that doesn't, you know, that's not a goal of mine to jump into a courtroom with anybody. I'd like to avoid that. I'd like to work with council. I'd like to work with anybody that's interested in listening. And I think it's just a shame that I haven't had that opportunity to talk in a public way about what this project looks like.
I disagree with that. Flat-out disagree with that. Mr. Milton has had many chances, standing at the podium. He's had more than 20 minutes more than once to sit down and describe and explain and paint a picture of what he's going to do. So, to say that there has not been a chance for you to explain yourself, that's wrong.
That was very...
I took a public speaking course, and the rule of public speaking is, you know your topic so you can present it in a knowledgeable way within 20 minutes. If you don't present it within 20 minutes, you're taking on too much material, or you don't know your material. And we've given you 20 minutes more than once. So, you should have been able to present your material knowledgeably to us, or you're not studied up on it. So, to say we haven't given you the time is incorrect. I just won't accept that.
Okay. Well, I would be reluctant to turn this into a cross-examination forum. I think that, would there be any other rebuttal or rebuttal commentary on other members of the council based on what you've heard?
I'd like to say something. And first of all, just to answer back, in response to Mr. Milton, he has had adequate time and opportunities to address the council and the community, and I just wanted to state that and note that, so.
Commentary from council members. Okay, no reason to belabor it. Council is controlled of the time. We're now at 7:30. Mr. Milton would like to make another comment. I'm at the, the center of the council. Do you hear a response from Mr. Milton?
Have you wanted to hear one more time?
One more time.
Based on the importance, yes. Set your timer to give him three minutes.
One more time.
Go for it.
I just wanted to address some of what Kevin's talking about as far as I've had 20 minutes. Well, part of what we're dealing with is a rapidly evolving situation. I mean, the laws are literally changing sometimes month to month. So, the last time I've had 20 minutes, a couple of things are pretty different. One is that the law was strictly different when I was able to address you guys last. So, things have changed. The second thing I'll mention is that there's been a considerable amount of turnover on the council. In fact, the majority of the council has turned over since the last time I was able to address anybody on the council. So, there are three members that I'm looking at here in the councils I never had a chance to sit down and talk to. So, you know, when you say that I've had my 20 minutes, well, that was a month ago. And if you're interested in new information, current information, I think it's reasonable that we can sit down and talk, or we can have a public meeting. You can have your lawyer present. I'm not, I don't have anything to hide. I just want to share information and feel like we're working from the same sheet.
Counsel, response, observations, comments?
No response.
Okay. Very none. Then, thank you for your feedback. Well, then, we would return, since each of you have had your opportunity to share your commentary, which will be inserted in the ordinance in front of you, then I would invite the council to engage in action related to the agenda matter relating to ordinance number 2014-03.
Well, I, I am in favor of continuing it just for the remainder of the six-month time period.
Okay. We're two months in, so...
Roughly, it was June-ish. I'm not sure what the exact date is, but to calculate it out. Did you have the...
I think it was, uh, seven? Maybe half six?
Yeah, because we had 60 days from last Friday, the 21st.
We had 60 days from the 25th.
Yeah. So, it's been, it's been in effect for two months. We have four months left in the ban.
Almost exactly.
That's close.
Well, that is an option. And I would presume during that four months, there would be opportunities for individuals, opponents and proponents to provide ongoing feedback, right? Well, in the interest of continuity, you provided your opinion. Maybe we should go from left to right again, starting with you, and share your individual perspectives as to your recommendations regarding this ordinance. Mr. Flynn, you would be up.
I'm up?
Yeah.
I agree with Joe. Let's continue the ban until we get some more rulings from the state, and we'll go from there.
Mr. Fennessen?
What, now, when the...
You want to know your options?
Yes.
You could terminate the ordinance effective immediately, or you could, as Mr. Shai's suggesting, you continue for the remaining four months of the six-month ban, or you could extend or create an additional six-month ban at the end of this four months. But you don't have, I don't believe, we have an option to terminate the, or to make it permanent.
No, we don't have the option to make it permanent. We don't have the option to extend it at this point.
Oh, I understood that we did.
The extension would come at the end of this one. If they wanted to extend it, they would do it at the end.
With a separate ordinance.
Yeah, it would be separate.
Right. Thank you for that.
Now, you'd go through the whole process over again, of a public hearing.
So, we're repeating the same process over again at the end of the four months.
Yeah, if that's the choice the council wants.
Yeah, we're not allowed to make a permanent decision right now.
I was incorrect in that assumption. I was incorrect in that assumption then.
Will I be in favor with the other two councilmen?
Yes, I'd be in favor with, with the council, just to extend the next additional four months. Okay, all right. Well, then, there is some obvious unanimity amongst council. Now, we did have a member of the public that wanted to make a comment, and now that we've got a chance for it, did the council want to hear from the member of the public, given them the time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, one more.
Wait, June liar, I'm passing age of 70, and I forgot what I was going to ask.
No.
No, just teasing. With the public comments, will we also be required to have only a few minutes? Or can we have as long as Mr. Milton in speaking?
Well, that would depend on the council.
Okay.
But at some subsequent meeting, in which the council is going to, well, if they choose to address the issue, the council would make that decision at that point. In the interest of fairness, though, I mean, you have to adhere to the appearance of fairness.
Oh, yeah.
That's the whole premise of the law in quasi-judicial matters. Okay, so, all back, now, with that council input, I would await action from the council with regard to the ordinance and the motion.
I'll put a motion on, and I think if I can word this properly, that we take, the ordinance was a 2014-2?
03.
03. Got all these numbers. 2014-03, and we continue that through the end of this original six months, which would give us an additional four months from today to finish out the ban. And then, we'll bring it up for discussion at that time.
You need to read the...
Super. City of Vader, Washington, ordinance number 2014-03, an ordinance of the city of Vader, Washington, relating to the adoption of findings of fact to support the continued maintenance of an interim zoning ordinance on the acceptance of any applications for development or business licensing for medical or recreational marijuana usage, and confirming the maintenance of interim zoning ordinance for six months after the initial imposition, ordinance 2014-02 as the effective period.
And I would insert contingent upon the insertion of the council statement of facts.
Correct.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Section 3.
Section 3, right.
Okay. Okay, with that, I would restate the motion for council's action. You heard the motion by Mr. Milton to approve ordinance 2014-03, as read, contingent upon the insertion of the statements of fact that's provided by the council and mayor during tonight's council meeting. Did you catch that?
I did.
Is there...
Legal counsel said I needed to restate back to them exactly what was going to be written. And I know that means time, but that's what she said.
Okay, so, you need to read that for a second reading in the minutes. Okay, let's, can you do that?
Well, what I need to read back is the statement, and then, that they want, put in that, based on what they said. I need to read that back and make sure that it's what they said.
Okay, it's a matter of public...
That they are approving that that's correct.
Thank you. Then, so, were you able to...
I hope so. I try really hard. I think if I, if I hit each topic, then, then I'll do the finalization of that wording at a later time to approve the wording. But if I can just get the topics addressed for each of you, make sure I get the topic correct, and then, we can do all the fine details after the fact. Is that okay? If I do it that way?
Okay, that's fine.
Hopefully, that will be okay with everybody, because I'm a lot...
Well, you're doing that, I'm going to stand up.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Mr. Fennessen, I have that you are opposed in general to marijuana, that you should be based upon a doctor's prescription. Forty-eight out of 50 states did not agree with the passage of marijuana use law. It's a contradictory message to children. Marijuana smoke is worse than tobacco smoke. The drug is not good for everyone. Any drug is not good for everyone. May be good for business, but we're not willing to sacrifice something. I'll have to look at the, not willing to sacrifice for the money.
Children.
The children. Is that what it was, the children? Not willing to sacrifice the children. Okay. All right. Use went up three times in the Netherlands when it was made legal. Drug dealers will continue to sell drugs. Personal comments of his own children and use of marijuana, dumbing down of them. It's immoral and should be illegal. Harsher drugs will come, or will still be, you said something about harsher drugs will still be easier for them to, to become legal.
Well, the same kind of arguments used for it will be used for other drugs.
Okay. All right.
Mr. President?
Money cannot buy back our kids' health. The community does not need to roll over, and it's revealed and then immoral law. Okay? That all sounds, did I miss anything?
I got the list.
Okay, you can give me a copy of that if you want. Okay, Justin Olson, you said you read a Longview paper about the smell of marijuana. It was a neutral article, but it was interesting that members of our comm, congregation, sorry, of our community had already brought up that issue, and said Colorado is struggling and working at that particular topic as well. It's too high of a risk for this community, for a community of this size. You talked about the footprint, the effects that it will have on the stream and the environment, that we don't know what that will be yet. You have to think about our local economy, and you don't see it helping our community. Everyone's coming from out of the area, not people here in Vader, getting jobs so far. You talked about the culture, trying to build up the culture, and have seen productive lives become unproductive with the use of this drug. That's pretty good. Okay. Joe, you thanked everyone for their public comment tonight, previous meetings. Council is taking time and thought into this topic, and you admonished everyone to recognize that. Six-month temporary ban for zoning and manufacturing, oh, I'm sorry, I think you said that you were in agreement, I think is what you said. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay. You said our options were to continue with the six-month ban, or to overrule the ordinance, or to adopt it as written. You said there's unrest in the state legislature, waiting on guidance from the state still at this point. You're concerned about the image of Vader, trying to clean it up. Issue is that we want people to come to this town, have mortgages, and didn't vote for it, we wanted. Something to that.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Kevin Flynn made the point that it's still illegal federally, and the issue with federal banks that can't take their money, which causes these type of businesses to keep large sums of cash on hand and the subsequent crime because of that, and that we don't need these kind of problems in our town. He said... He said the legislature just passed a ruling that none of the money is gonna go to the cities. The surplus money that the city has had is partially because, due to lower law enforcement costs, and the more crime will definitely hurt our financial standing. You made comment of not putting all your eggs in one basket. That it's not wise business, in a business sense. And you said that we've been accused that we won't talk to members, different people, because we threatened, we were threatened. This was because we were threatened with a lawsuit. And the attorney advised council not to talk with opposing groups without counsel, attorney counsel, legal counsel present. Thank you. That's-
Yep.
Okay, Mayor. You said that you stated a lot previously, but you echoed the comments by council tonight, and you wanted to elaborate on two points. One is the Lewis County Sheriff Officer, Rob Snada, discussion about Vader law enforcement that you had, and he was at a large marijuana bust at the time, and that the Lewis County Sheriff Office has zero tolerance for the use, since it's still federally illegal. That they see thousands of dollars in money and equipment at this bust. And you reinforced that they are still uncertain of the cost to the city and communities with that type of business in, in their cities as far as law enforcement is concerned. And then, oh, and the second thing was the rebuttal to the quote, the previous quote from Brandon Milton, which you read from the ordinance, of not willing to talk. And you quoted R C W forty-two thirty-six oh five oh, X K, blah blah blah. Okay? Appearance of fairness. We're not acting to squelch communications. We're following advice from legal counsel and state law. Legal act, we have been told that legal action will be taken, so it is sufficient reason for us to not talk in private. And we'll probably have to include the public comments that you had back and forth. I don't know if I have to read Brandon's or not, but-
This is for council and mayor.
Okay. So the council, Mr. Flynn responded to Brandon Milton's comments and said that he's had more than twenty minutes, more than twice. He's had his opportunities, that he should have been better at presenting it in the time that he had. The mayor stated it was not a cross-examination. And Justin Olson says she has adequate, that Brandon Milton had adequate time to talk to council and the community previously. Mr. Milton had a rebuttal. Mr. Schei said wanted to hold, he wanted to uphold the ban. Mr. Flynn agreed. Mark Fennesson agreed. The mayor explained, oh, the mayor explained the options. Then Mark Fennesson agreed with the other council members. Justin Olson agreed, and then Menthicker spoke.
Well, with that, then, I hope that was well done. Fantastic.
Nobody's ever clapped for my notes.
Take a bow.
Thank you.
We can't go standing in station one.
Have a thankless job. Well done. So with that clarification, I hope you have some confidence that that's what you will see in section three. If the council agrees when you vote on this, which motion is currently before you. Is there any, I've, we've read the motion, I've restated it, and we've had that clarification of those for the public record. Is there any additional comment? Or actually, before that, is there a second? At this point, in the council's deliberation on this matter, on this motion? Or you only for, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Did you make the motion?
Kevin made it.
I made it.
I almost seconded it, but I-
I'm with Liz.
Are you gonna make this on Kevin's motion?
So we have a second. And now, it's an opportunity to provide any additional commentary from members of the council.
I just wanna thank everybody for being unified on this. Very tender subject, very difficult, and it was handled very professionally. I just thank everybody for it.
Okay, with that, if there are no other observations on the part of the council members, then we'll place the matter to a vote. All in favor of said motion, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried by unanimous council vote, and I echo Mr. Flynn's comments. Thank you for that action. And that will conclude council discussion on item one under oral business. Given that we're approaching an hour and a half in, let's proceed quickly to item number two, wastewater treatment topic. Item A, the report on the workshop by Kathy Reed, the next workshop on April eighteenth, two thousand fourteen. Well, you've just heard it. Kathy could not be here, she wanted to be, but had an engagement that was unforeseen, that she could not wiggle out of. So she extends through me her apologies. But that, she was very pleased with the attendance and participation and the overall tenor of the workshop, and hopes that you will proceed on and attend. The next one, as I indicated, for the public record, on April eighteenth. And that other members of the public who would like to be present would feel free to-
Do we state the time? I didn't write it on the agenda, but it's from one to three.
Okay. One to three. We have a question from a member of the public. Counsel, that's your deliberation.
Yes.
Go ahead. Okay, on that side.
It's unfortunate that it's one to three, when some of us can't attend due to work.
Right, yeah. We moved it to five last time. No, 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 those public here.
I was able to be there because I don't work on Fridays normally, but it is, it would be nice if they were having it when the working people could be there.
Okay, I think the point's well taken.
I do have information that she provided from that last meeting. If anybody wants to come, I can make copies of that for you. It was pretty much everything that was in that packet was what she was describing. If that would help anyone.
Yeah, okay. Duly noted, though, I'm sure for the council. All right, so with that, we'll proceed to item B. Council, consideration of the B H C consultant contract proposal for the facilities plan update. You'll recall from our last meeting that we were confident that we would have the response to council's acceptance of their scope of proposal before this meeting. Two weeks have elapsed, and we, consequently, we'd hear from them. But did you hear anything this afternoon?
Well, we've been going back and forth all week, making adjustments, but it hasn't, it's not been finalized yet.
Okay, then, to nutshell, where we're at with them, they are the ones who would like to expedite this process, but they have not completed their modifications and responsibilities, the feedback we've given. So they said by the end of this week, maybe that would mean tomorrow. So that's where we're at. So council has no additional action until we hear back.
Okay.
That's that. Update on the latest with regard to the C D B G grant proposal for the I N I reduction. And I'm prepared to provide considerable feedback to the council on this. And I would suggest that I would incorporate item B in what I'm about to present to you. So we'll cover two talking points at once. And that's the update on the latest with regard to the glue array system.
So you do C and D together?
Yes.
Okay.
If you're not opposed to that.
Nope.
Okay. And break in, as I'm sharing with you the feedback I've prepared for you. Because if you have a question, or there's some confusion that I'm creating in your minds, just interrupt me, and I'll find it more specific. But what I'm about to share with you is information that I have received from Mike Marshall, who was, I'm going to stand up if I do this. So Mike Marshall was talking to our city clerk and shared information that he'd gotten from Kathy Reed relating to the C D B G I N I project. And I then have got additional clarifying information Kathy Reed herself. And then this afternoon, well, I'm bringing with the, where I got the information. But what we've discovered from Gibson Olson, they have been implementing the initial startup procedures with this project, which is to replace the aging sewer pipes from the city's main sewer line to the edge of the property owner's property. They have done smoke testing and using cameras in the process of that. And what they've discovered is that the majority of the pipes, which they had been claiming needed to be replaced, are of the state-of-the-art equipment. PVC pipe that obviously have been replaced since nineteen ninety-nine to present date. And so they have not found any pipes that need to be replaced with this quarter, three-quarters of a million dollars, which is shocking. And you are seeing some, we need to get some clarifying, because Mike Marshall has talked to Jill.
My understanding is that there are still a few points that have issues, like where there's some bending and stuff, but it's very insignificant compared to-
That doesn't pertain to the quality of the pipes, right?
Right, right. And I believe it was seventy-nine when they did the replacement of most of those pipes. And a few in oh-four, oh-five, so.
Okay, yes, specific and clarified. Thank you for that. But the point is, they had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately to use to repair those, and there's no need, basically, no general need. But they also have funding that would replace the manhole areas where the pipes conjoin, and there's manhole covers that are leaking rainwater and stormwater. Those all need to be replaced, and that would cost probably a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the seven hundred and fifty. So that was, I mean, the council could ask some questions, but I won't put words in your mouth. But somebody spent some money to justify the receipt of this grant money on the presumption that those pipes needed to be replaced.
That's right.
And money was expended prior to this discovery. So you could ask some pointed questions, but they're being asked that.
I will.
So, but I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but that's something you might want to look into. But we're not to find fault, because right now Kathy Reed, with this disclosure, has sent feelers out to see whether or not we could transfer the use of this money to phase two of this project, which was to replace the aging clay pipes from the property owner's lines to their house, side sewers. And right now, the tentative response, there's no guarantees yet, is that it's likely that that would get approved. So, but there's some caveats to that. And that, that funding would fall under the reduced income category. In other words, if somebody is in the, I forget the phrase, I don't know.
Low income.
Low income, that's it. If you're in the low-income status, which is below the national figure. I don't have at my fingertips what that figure is. And if you're in that status, then you will be the recipient of funding, grant funding, to make that replacement. If your income is above that level, then you'd have to pay for it yourself, generally speaking. And so the city council would have to pass an ordinance requiring all residents of City of Vader to replace those pipes, if it were necessary. If your pipes were older than, say, and I was told not to say a specific age, every year. But if they're older than thirty years, or if they're clay, or if they're cement pipes, those would have to be replaced. But the council would have to pass an ordinance to require residents to do that.
That would be, we'd have to replace all the pipes that are not PVC. Everything not PVC has to be replaced.
Yeah, that's the nutshell of it.
Okay.
But historically, when you engage in that activity, you're going to find people, even strangely enough, who will resist disclosing their IRS earnings. And so you would have to incorporate in this ordinance the ability to enforce that ordinance. And the city would have to demonstrate your political will to carry out that ordinance. If you don't have the will, then it was suggested to me that the council might want to consider another option, which would be to wait until you've decided what your preferred alternative is. And then with the grant funding, which you would, might receive to cover costs involved with that solution, then request C D B G funding to replace all of the pipes, regardless of the low-income status of your residents. But that's a long term, but that's not necessarily desirable strategy, because there's no guarantees that you would get it, and you have the money in hand now, so.
On a short-run basis, wouldn't we be better off? The only people that are gonna receive money are those who are low-income. Correct? So if they have to replace their sewers, low-income would divulge their income, because they can't afford to replace them. It has to be done, so they're gonna want the free money.
They would, but I've been told that, as odd as it may seem, you will always find-
Oh, yes.
-a handful of people, regardless of whether or not it's free or not.
Well, then they have to, then they have to pay for it.
Well, you'd have to be willing to have law enforcement come in and enforce that ordinance. But hey, maybe we'll be lucky, and maybe there isn't. It's hard for me to comprehend. But we have a comment from the public.
Sure.
The council can-
Yes.
I may have a suggestion for a solution on that. And it happened, just the thing I brought to you. Why couldn't the city council possibly approve what's known as, help me out on this one. An anonymous survey concerning the income and state of fact point out specifically what the funds would be used for, and why you're asking, and make it anonymous. And does, you would send it, have it, they could either mail it back to the city here, you know, the, you know, and then when all the surveys got back, you would know.
Well-
You wouldn't necessarily know specifically who, because you want it anonymous.
But if, that might not be feasible under the C D B G guidelines, because they might require-
Because of time constraints?
Yeah, who knows, in order to verify.
Each individual household who would receive the funds would have to be willing to divulge their information. So that's really where it comes down to. Even people who would be getting money sometimes don't want to give their information out.
I thought it's true, they-
I don't, it might help.
And that's your anonymity would be, but before we, I was encouraged not to go into the weeds of the specifics, but just to state the general concerns and historical experiences that these lifelong employees have seen as they've done similar things. We have another comment from a member of the public. Counsel, your time.
Hey, Rob, briefly, I think I understand what this lady is saying. This would answer the question if there is going to be funding, because you'd know the number of people anonymously who said, my income, let's say, is under twenty thousand a year. Because we don't know if there's a problem, or if there is. But if we knew that there are X number of families whose income would fall by, then you could take it from there, otherwise, why bother?
I can tell the council that we know the percentage of households in City of Vader, because we've already had analyses done. And we do qualify as under, under privilege, it's not the right word.
Poor community, low income, broke.
We're in a low-income community. We exceed fifty-two percent of households in the lower-income family status. And Gibson Olson, in their smoke testing and their, the cameras taking- And Gibson Olsen, in their smoke testing and their camera taking, are logging each house that they're doing and they are identifying what sort of pipe is on the residence's property. So they're keeping a record of that, so they know who's got old pipe and who doesn't. So that would be a valuable bit of historical information.
Right.
So we will know that there'll be a specific number, statistics will be helpful in that. And I know you're being a members' man, you could probably provide some insight on that. But I think that's basically the 10 talking points. But the last and 10th talking point that Kathy Reed emphasized is we can't assume that there are guarantees that this will be officially accepted. So we can't count this $750,000 quite yet, but because we'd have to have the ordinance in place, council needs to act on it fairly quickly in order for us to submit a formal application.
Can you put the ordinance in effect by our next meeting? Can you have it written up by that meeting?
I can answer that. I think, here's what I would respond to that. This afternoon, I met with officials with J. H. Kelly and who now have ownership of the Blu-ray. That's why I'm dovetailing this, item C and D. And present at that meeting was Representative Gibson Olsen, who was aware of the side sewer project. And he informed me that he would be willing to, oh, and Joe Rayburger, our city attorney, who provides the legal counsel on our utilities, the drinking water and waste treatment, was present. And he and this Gibson Olsen representative agreed that they could put something together. In fact, this afternoon, the J. Kelly, I mean Gibson Olsen employee, said he would fax in a poem that's been used previously. So I suspect that it's already been prepared.
Super.
It's available for council action. So yes, that's how I've responded to that question. But we have to do it, of course, in a city council meeting, so it will be ready by our next council meeting.
Okay, super.
Okay. I'll segue into the Blu-ray situation. Henceforth and forever, as a matter of public record, Blu-ray has been dismantled. It no longer exists and it's now under the official control. And they've asked that for future reference, you refer to EF Tank Holdings.
EF Tank Holdings?
EF Tank Holdings is the entity that now has control of those units out sitting on our waste treatment property. And representatives of that entity were present this afternoon. We had a conference call with a number of people and we took our little group with our city attorney, Joe Rayburger, out to the site. And I was asked to be somewhat general in the observations, but I can report to the council that they were startled by what they discovered. They described it with one word, "It's a mess." And they were startled to the point where they, there was some optimism at the outset of the get-together that they might be able to engineer it so that it comes in compliance with the Department of Ecology and that it might be a viable alternative in the engineering amendment that BHC is trying to put together. But after, we went through everything. And I'll provide you privately with specifics if you'd like, but the general outcome was that there, there was a lot of disappointment and discouragement that it would be cost-effective on their part to try it, given the state of the terms. And the fact that, given the fact this public meeting with media presence, there is considerable missing material equipment. They did not believe it would be missing, but it is. And so they're looking into that, I suspect, and so in the days ahead, they're going to be meeting, consulting each other and deciding a course of action. And they will present that course of action to council at the earliest opportunity. So that's probably all that you need to be aware of at the moment with regard to that. But they're aware of BHC's engineering efforts. They'll be working with representatives of BHC to provide to them what they can, given the current state, status of the system. And I was led to believe that if it is not salvageable, that there will be some effort on their part to make good on the situation out there.
Okay.
More will be forthcoming.
Okay.
And that's basically it. Okay, then I would proceed with item E and update on the selection of the wastewater treatment operator. You know, we've been, after the last meeting, you authorized me to initiate efforts to obtain project estimates and proposals from after we've advertised, which we did, and we put a time limit of Wednesday at 4:00 to receive estimates for services to replace Nev Peltier, a person who's doing it part-time temporarily for us, so that we can cut Winlock loose from our situation. And, and as it turns out, at present, we're still negotiating. Both of the current offers that we have in front of us are still expensive. And I plan on meeting with one of the individuals. Did we set something up for tomorrow?
No.
Okay, then we'll try and meet with that one individual as quickly as possible. And then we have the other option from PL and we're still, did we receive her revised proposal this afternoon?
Not for her to do it privately. We did not.
Okay. And that's about all I've got to report at the moment. So we'll definitely have some reporting for council consideration at our next council meeting. Any questions about that? So far, Mr. Peltier is doing okay. I should insert here that there was a concern about a holding tank that had been installed, maybe the council was aware of this, that was installed with funding from J. H. Kelly that was extended by Blu-ray officials. And it was a very large, eight to 10-foot-deep holding tank, two very expensive pumps inside. And the pipes were cut, so now it is filling. And we examined it this afternoon. And Department of Ecology says we have to fix it. And for us to put an individual down in there, suck that solid waste out of it, would pose some risk. But, so our employee refused to do it and I agreed with his decision. I wouldn't do it, but I was given some assurances from the people in our tour this afternoon that was in fact a problem and that they will, they were formulating action to fix it quickly. So I insert that as part of my...
And that is, under their pilot program, that is their responsibility.
Well, yeah. I didn't sense that they were...
They couldn't have been happy.
They wasn't mentioned. They were responsive to it, in case you were wondering. So that's pretty much the latest on item E. Okay? So, yes.
Can I just make a commentary about, please, I know Nev has been frustrated because a lot of his time is being taken up right now, the amount of time he's allowed, is being taken up with doing the sewer treatment work and doing the testing, getting it over to Winlock and doing all that. So if you feel like you don't see things getting done, just know that it's a temporary situation and he's frustrated with it too. And so if you see him around, you might give him a thank you or pat on the back because he's working really hard and trying to get a lot done in a very little amount of time. So as soon as we get this operator hired, then that will free him up to do more work than he's...
Didn't we talk about giving in some extra hours to handle some of the sewer treatment stuff?
Yeah, that was, going to be a part of the discussion on appropriations for additional 2014 budget.
Okay.
So, yeah, that had been mentioned. So, but thank you for that sensitive observation. Could easily, if I would underscore your comments. So with that, I would proceed with item number three. And, but it is now 8:15 and I know that this conversation was going to open an opportunity for the council to speculate and to provide some brainstorm feedback related to that surplus. And in my mind, it could take a half an hour if we begin this topic. Are there any concerns? Because I would leap to number four if you were concerned about the time and I would consider tabling item three for our next council meeting, which will be less crowded. But if council's correct.
I'd be, I'd be for that.
It's reasonable.
Okay.
It's reasonable, yeah.
You'd be willing to table item three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or is it a planner consultant, item three equal?
No, no, as far as the additional budget, the discussion of how to perhaps extend those budget funds.
I think if we officially table, we should probably do a motion.
Oh, yeah, definitely. So with that, would council...
I'll put forth the motion that we table item number three until the next meeting.
We heard the motion to table item three until our next first city council meeting. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right. Well, then we all jump to item four, last, update on the planner consultant option. I'm pleased to report, and you may not be aware of this, but you'll recall in our last council meeting that the options we had before us appeared to be excessively expensive and that some of the options were disconcerting in their potential quality. So we, you authorized me to revisit the initial offer submitted by Rob White, the individual from Reston. And so when the contact was made, his initial comment was, "I don't know what prompted you to call, but your timing was perfect," because he's just decided to hire on an assistant whose rate of pay would be half of what he was originally...
We love that.
And that was not all. He was, there were some other accounting considerations that he said that he would certainly incorporate in a revised project cost proposal. And we haven't gotten it yet, but we should get it by...
Yeah, he said by end of this week.
So I wish we had it for council action, but I am guardedly optimistic that there might be a miracle for the City of Bader.
More goodness, we love that.
So with that, we're going to keep our fingers crossed and I'm working out to receive that, that we'll take decisive action as soon as we do. So that would conclude my input regarding item four under all this. So with that, if there is no other council comment?
I have one thing.
Yes?
So we obviously have at least a couple of people that wanted some extended time to address the council on the marijuana ordinance. What can we do to facilitate that, that type of discussion?
Well, I believe the council has a variety of options. You could allocate time at our next council meeting or at a future, you have four now. There is no required public hearing required by law, but you could schedule a workshop, which time the public would be invited and ample time could be afforded, Mr. Melton and or any other individual. So, yeah, that's how I'd respond to it.
I would like to see something like that set up where people could voice, you know, if they needed 10 or 15 minutes to talk, let them, let them get in there and talk. I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear what everyone has to say.
I don't think it would hurt anything at all. He made a point, said that someone has had not heard him personally, I'm not a, I'm for hearing.
Why don't we do it during one of our, a lot of times, a lot of scheduled meetings?
I, my sense is that we could select some dates if you'd like and we could bring it to our next council meeting for your attention.
Instead of taking a separate day for workshop, I know we're, we're dealing with time of year and time schedules and it's getting harder and harder to get people to pull time away from work and whatever. We could have a workshop and start the council meeting a half hour early and that way it would give us time and it wouldn't interfere with the, with the council meeting.
Is that what you're going to make?
Yeah, that way they're not tearing up the day.
For a weekend.
I know we got good weather coming and everybody wants to get so much to do and it's just, you know, it shows a little bit of current concern that way.
So you're looking at April 18th, the workshop?
Uh, is that the next council meeting?
This would be an addition.
This is an addition to that.
He's saying, yeah, he's saying a different workshop, that it would be before one of the council meetings.
Yes.
Not been set yet, but it would be for this...
Like a half hour, six o'clock.
Specifically. That's what I was going to ask, is do you, how much time are you looking to set aside so that we can schedule, if you guys can tell me what you had in mind so we can make sure and schedule the right amount of time for you?
You mentioned half an hour.
You said half an hour ago.
But that might not be enough.
Oh, we got some...
Depending on how much you want to let people speak, so it could probably be...
And it doesn't have to be in April, I would say.
You have time.
Maybe we could propose some dates and bring options for your consideration.
Check it up, check out some dates and bring it up at the next council meeting.
Rather than just speculate at the end of this meeting.
Set some time aside. We're not under the pressure right now to make a decision instantly.
Exactly.
Kind of an extended, kind of like the public hearing where we had an hour, but maybe an hour or at least an hour and they could sign up in advance and they can, we could know what we were dealing with, you know, if we needed more time.
I think I would have to, we can work that out for you. So we had two observations from the public on this.
Oh, let's circle first.
Council okay with this?
Yeah, sure.
I was just curious, if you're only doing a lot, 30 minutes, it seems to be an issue within that he hasn't had, and then they're going to have other rebuttal comments hit on other, is that going to be in?
Right, right. I think there's sensitivity to that, yeah.
My comment kind of piggybacks with hers. This is so critical. There is, why not start the regular council meeting at 7:00 or 7:15? I know it's a sacrifice, but start the other one at, no later, earlier than 5:30, preferably 6:00 because a lot of people work. And then we, then everybody will get their say. You're going to time it so everybody gets the same amount of time, but it's a sacrifice, but I think it's well worth it for this one meeting to start it earlier and let the meeting, the regular meeting go later.
Yeah, it's a concept and we can write that down and there's one of your options at our next meeting.
I have the other option beside the coin. There are same rebuttals that have been almost redundiced, as you've done before, having seven to one or having, giving one person on each side. Brandon was asking for specific people to ask him questions about his site, his actions, about the newest state-regulated areas that we've been doing on-site to match and to meet those regulations, from wind to chemical to whatever questions may be asked at this point, rather than things past that he's not been able to talk with both of you or yourself as new council members or Mr. Flynn that's been hearing all those things from the last 14 meetings that I've been to. And so that would be an option, having, having people that need to know direct questions to him rather than having everybody else ask their redundant information that they've gotten off of the internet. And so they can get it directly from the horse's mouth rather than directly from some kind of internet that they think they're experts on.
So you're thinking of a more interactive...
Yes, please.
Between the public and the speaker.
He would definitely be there and so would I.
Not just him, but anybody else that wanted to talk.
I'm the master grower on the site for him. I can really, if he's excited to do the work.
Well, I know Liz was talking about wanting 20 minutes or something like that.
Definitely, yeah.
And so, you know, just thinking.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
What the council wants, the council will get in terms of that. That's duly noted. Okay, I think we can put together some proposals, concepts for you to actually, actually sink your teeth into. All right. Any other comments? If not, then...